All right, everybody. Welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Hadley Select Board. Do we start? We'll start in the business. We do have a consent agenda this evening. There are three items here. We have the approval of minutes from April 5th, 12th, and 26th. We have warrants 1748, 1748 S., and payroll warrant 1747. And then we also have a request for a one-day liquor license, which is a change request from malt and wine to an all-alcohol license, and that is for the WGBY Asparagus Festival to be held on June 3rd, 2017, at the Town Common.
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on these articles? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask why the change for the all-alcohol?
Sure.
Seeing that she's here this evening?
Yes.
So everybody will understand.
We're not proposing to have an open bar or something like that in the common, but two of our brewers, well, one of our brewers from the Elements Brewing also distills the spirit, and he wanted to be able to sample it at the festival. And since we were, and since we, so we asked, and we thought we'd, Paul from V1 Vodka would also be welcome to come over and sample his vodka too if we had this change. But we couldn't, under the beard, wine. So it's really, so these two local brewers who also have, one distiller and one brewer can also come and sample one of their spirits. It's not to have an open bar or a all-liquor, you know. And I thank you for taking the extra time to revisit the comment to allow us to invite them.
Okay. So motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Marie.
Thank you very much. I hope some of you will join us on June 3rd.
Right, so do you want to, public service announcement? You got your free time here?
Entertainment.
I just want to say that on behalf of WGBY, our viewers, our board, and our staff, we're delighted to be hosting this festival once again here in Hadley, and that Hadley just happens to be in the center of this fabulously rich heritage here in western Massachusetts and the home of one of the most important crops over the last 150 years, which gives us the opportunity to celebrate all things local and agricultural. So please come on and join us next Saturday. We hope to see you there.
All right, thanks, Marie.
Thank you.
And you're all invited.
Of course.
Thank you.
We do have one item that was not on the agenda this evening that we'd like to take early, and there's been a request from our police department for an appointment that needs to happen for staffing purposes, and I believe Sergeant Cook is in the hallway. Sergeant Cook? Yep. Okay. Yeah. Okay, and I believe our police chief is not with us this evening. He's away at a training program.
Correct.
But we do have our two illustrious sergeants with us this evening in his stead.
Thank you very much.
Yep. So what would you like us to know?
All right. So Chief Mason sends his regards from training. We present to you this evening Jose Cabrera, who's been a special police officer for us since August of 2016. Previous to that, and up until recently, he was a part-time officer working for Sunderland Police Department. He applied for and navigated our most recent full-time process and was named as a finalist. Jose has always and continued to give his 100% during every moment that he is at work. He's expressed an interest in becoming involved in more specialized areas of the department, has proven to be a team player, and is very well-liked amongst peers. He's a talkative officer and has shown no issues in communicating effectively with anyone he comes in contact with, and he will make a fine addition to our department. If you choose to appoint him to full-time, he will be on probationary period during which he will have to attend a full-time police officers academy. On behalf of Chief Mason, Sergeant Hartwright, Sergeant Costa, and I proudly recommend Officer Jose Cabrera to be appointed as our newest full-time police officer.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Glad to have him.
If not, very welcome. Yeah, very, very welcome. We're pleased to have you.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And are these?
Who's with you?
Yeah, other?
That's my mom.
Luisa, that's my best friend's mom, Judy.
Welcome.
Thanks for joining us, Pramor.
Yeah?
Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, well, good. So good luck with your staffing.
Thank you very much.
Yep, and may it be a quiet summer for all of you.
Oh, drum.
I know, I know.
We'll let you know.
Back to work now.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
When do you anticipate that he would have to leave for academy?
I anticipate early winter, probably early of 2018, sometime January.
Okay, so he's going to get acclimated with the force, and we're not going to lose another man right away?
Correct. He has already cleared our field training program, so he is already out on the road and on his own. So on Friday at 7:00 PM, he will start as, he'll start his full-time career with us.
All right, great, super. All right, and thank you to the entire force as always.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so we do have time for a public comment, period?
Tell him, Sergeant Cook, which car is mine to.
Yes.
Thank you.
We do have a picture of it, it's stationed.
Oh, do you? Thank you.
Okay, so anybody here for public comment this evening? No? All right. Then, next on the agenda, let's see, we have a 7:15 appointment, but we can, we'll skip over that until we get to that allotted timeframe. David, the Commonwealth IT Grant, do you want to talk about that?
Okay, so we applied for the Commonwealth IT Grant back on April 1st. We asked for a total of $172,000 under that grant. Awards were told, we were informed that awards of up to $200,000 were possible. The Commonwealth has set aside $2 million for this project, and that communities that had previously participated in the Commonwealth Compact Program, Hadley being one of those, had priority in this round of funding. It was a very popular program. Nearly 90 communities applied for almost $8 million out of the 2 million that were available, so we got a partial award. We were awarded $50,000, and the scope of work spells out that they would like us to implement the SCADA system at the wastewater treatment plant. SCADA system is going to cost us $100,000, we estimate, so we'll have to raise the additional funds at the Fall Town Meeting.
How much does SCADA cost us?
About $100,000.
So this isn't going to help us with our immediate, imminent issues of the, you know, town hall and?
Right, they didn't fund that part.
Wasn't the last time SCADA in front of us, it was $26,000?
That was for a town hall. That was for an upgrade at the water treatment plant. So we have until June 30th, 2018, so next June, to spend this money, so we have plenty of time to.
Do the rest of the applications stay in there in case this program evolves again next year?
We'd have to resubmit.
Okay.
So tonight, what we need to do then is execute the contract, right? But until we raise the other money, it's kind of a moot point anyway, but this at least is positioning it so that if we are able to secure the funding?
Right.
We can move forward.
Madam Chair, could I ask David to give a brief explanation? People out there are probably all saying, what is the SCADA system?
Sure.
What is it going to do in the sewer department? Just to give them a little info of what we're talking about.
Okay, so SCADA, we're talking alphabet soup, so for the folks who are watching, we'll spell it out. Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition is SCADA. And basically, it's a way of remote monitoring the wastewater treatment plant, as well as accessing its critical systems so that we can make adjustments whenever there's an operational change, or if there's some sort of alarm that's triggered. So we have the system up in place for the water treatment plant. It allows us to remotely control the plant on times of emergency or weather events. It allows us to monitor what the plant is doing. So we don't have such a system in place for most of the wastewater treatment system. I think we have it in place for pump stations 1 and 4. That was part of the upgrade.
Yeah, 1 and 4, when we put the new pump stations in, we put limited access to SCADA.
Right.
And it's been working out real well. The three of us are kind of getting used to it and how it operates and what it does. During a thunderstorm, you know, you don't have to run to those two places immediately. You just go right.
Remotely.
You can do it remotely, right off your iPhone, or iPad, or computer, and see that it's running again, and go on to the important ones that aren't monitored.
Right. So we have seven additional pumping stations and the treatment plant itself, which are not covered by the SCADA system. So this would be a huge advance forward for the town of Hadley. It's identified as a need in the sewer capital plant that was created back in 2006, '07, something like that. So that's part of what we've been working toward anyways.
Okay, so does anyone want to make a motion that we move forward with the contract?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Would we possibly have additional funding in the Enterprise Fund to augment it at this time, or not yet?
Right. We can use money from the Sewer Impact Fee Fund, and I think that there might be sufficient money in there right now to cover it. And yes, you can use water reserves.
So this shouldn't affect the water rate, sewer rates again?
Should not affect water or sewer rates?
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Or tax rate.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to start the implementation of this program.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstate.
Okay, great. And then, let's see, before our appointment, notice of intent to sell Chapter 61A land, Huynoski. David?
Okay, so Dan is here from the Assessors' Office. He may have a finer-grain analysis of this property. There is approximately 10-acre lot at the intersection of Stockbridge Road and River Drive, which is under the Mass. General Law Chapter 61A Protected Farmland Program. This land is up to be sold, and under the tax breaks that are allowed for this property, the town of Hadley has a right of first refusal, and you can take up to 120 days to exercise that right of first refusal. The Realtor is asking that the Select Board waive their right of first refusal and to waive the 120-day waiting period. Conservation Commission has asked that you defer any action on this until they have a chance to meet, which they'll have a chance to meet prior to your next meeting on June 7th.
Okay, so we can move this off then to the June 7th meeting?
That's right.
Do you have a motion?
Sure.
I can motion to announce the Conservation's request and put this out for a week, please. I'd still like to, do you have the figures, Dan, on the taxes for that 61A right now?
The back taxes on the five years, Dan, if we exercise.
Yeah, I don't have these tax figure, but you're looking at probably around $12,000 to $13,000 in rollback.
Is that taxed, if it's being sold as business? There's just a question been raised tonight, whether it's, the tax rate when it's retro is based on building lots as it's going to be sold for, or is it done on farmland, which has been previously used for?
It's based on, they've been taxed as farmland, and we also assess it at full value.
Okay.
So it's basically a vacant residential piece of land that's being farmed. So they would pay the difference between what they would have paid and what they actually paid for the last five years.
As vacant business lots?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the back parcel was already planted for this year, but there's nothing planted along the road, so I would imagine they're probably going to turn those into building lots?
I haven't seen any plans on it.
No, this is kind of early, you know, but to make that worthwhile, they spent $400,000 for that property, and they're not going to just keep it farmland, you know, so.
I would assume you can fit probably five or six lots.
Along the road?
Oh, well, the road, and if they put it a street.
They were saying four.
It could, yeah, it's what could be.
What I read was four houses there.
Yeah, there's a few issues with the underground utilities going through there. Amherst wastewater effluent line goes through there also, so.
Okay.
They can tell you about us.
So motion was made and?
Yeah, I know, but it comes out of Stockbridge, Stockwell, I mean, Stockbridge and goes down 47.
Okay, so motion made and seconded to defer this to June 7th. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 7:15, perfect. All right, we have an appointment this evening, which was a continuation from last week with our Park and Rec Commission. So this is a joint meeting, a posted meeting with the Park and Rec Commission, and the appointment is to fill the current vacancy on the Commission.
Correct. So I also believe that you have a sign sealed and delivered, right?
Yes. Okay.
For my absenteeism person here.
Right, yep.
So I have not received any further inquiries or interest for this position. I don't know if they would have been directed to you, maybe, so.
But I didn't get any.
You didn't get any? Okay. So with that said.
We haven't gotten the additionals. I don't want it to sound like we don't have them. We have a great one.
Additional, yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect. So with that said, I would love to appoint Marianne Noonan to that vacant spot now.
As members of Select Board, I'd like to make that motion as well.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Now, do we need to read what's printed here?
No, I don't think so, but you do need to take a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, okay. So before we do that, motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion, questions, grilling of Marianne?
Let me kiss you up.
I think we grilled her enough last week. We'll leave her off the hook.
Okay. All right, David, do you want to do a roll call?
Waskevitz?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kagan?
Yes.
Chongla?
Yes.
And Patchinsky?
Yes.
And Diane?
Yes.
Okay.
And you want to look at the envelope?
This doesn't count, but just, we'll read the envelope out of letter of courtesy, but it's, "Please accept my absentee vote in support of Marianne Noonan of Sunrise Drive to fill the vacancy on the Hadley Park Commission created by the resignation of Sarah Palden Mincena, Andy Kupacki." And just for the record, because I know people will call in tomorrow, this doesn't count, but it is an information.
Okay, all right, great, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marianne.
Thank you for stepping up.
Yeah.
We also are already getting inquiries about the replacement for Kathy's position, as well as an interim, which I've been talking with David by electronically about the process for that. So I think that we're, we have a meeting on the books tomorrow night at 6:00. So we're going to try and move forward with that, so we can try and make that transition as seamless as possible with summer activities underway.
Sounds good. It's up to your board, your elected officials, so. Does Mary Jane?
Mary Jane.
Need to be sworn in by Jessica?
Yep.
Now, at some point.
Before your meeting.
Kathy had an assistant, right, at a point. Now, will she step up in the interim to fill some of the gap, or she's no longer there? I don't know.
She hasn't been there since I.
For quite a while. So you don't have an assistant now?
Currently, there is no assistant.
Okay, I didn't, I thought you did, okay.
That's fine.
We're starting to pursue that and getting the job description and kind of trying to tweak that, and then just with the move, we were kind of trying to get settled in before we move forward with that.
Okay.
If I might just pipe up on that. I'm David Albin from Huntington Road, and I live across the street from the park. And I just wanted to reiterate the important role Kathy has played with the volunteers, the Friends of Zaturka Park, in getting things moving. I know when you go past the park these days, it doesn't look great, but I think David can verify, we just advertised for this year's landscaping to clean up the site, stabilize it. That's going back and forth, both with our landscape designer, Berkshire Design, and we're in the process of procuring a landscape contractor. So Kathy's been important, and I have a little bit of concern that if she's playing a reduced role, we may not have the capacity in town government to work on an almost daily basis, I think, with both our design contractor and when we're in construction. So I just wanted to express that and hope we can find, you know, a way to keep going forward after Kathy.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit of an interesting situation, because, I mean, you'd think it would fall under the Park and Rec Commission, but it really hasn't up until this point. But to your point, taxpayers have voted, you know, CPA funding for this project, so we want to make sure that the taxpayer dollars are properly shepherded, and we don't really have a tie to the, a formal tie to the town at this point with the Friends of Zaturka Park.
Certainly I have.
Yeah.
And if I can be frank, the Commissioners have not been a real active partner in the park planning with us. We've briefed them a few times, but we haven't, we haven't, you know, we've been meeting weekly and working with the landscape architect regularly, and I'm concerned about the lack of engagement of the Commissioners, so I'm wondering if there's another way that we can administer the project.
And if I could be frank, we have been very on the record at our Park and Rec meetings that are usually recorded, that the Park and Rec Commissioners were looking to the Friends of Zaturka Park to come to us with their recommendations and ideas. This is not something that we are doing as Commissioners, but we are fully supporting. So I don't want it to be that it has been hands-off, but our role in this is, we feel, to have an engagement to know what's going on, but not do the stuff that the Friends of Zaturka Park are doing. So that might have been miscommunicated, but we have gotten our briefings, and we are apprised of what's going on on it, but, and Andy definitely has gone out to the site, but I don't, I want you to be understanding where we're coming from with that.
Well, I mean, it seems like we probably have some thinking to do about that. I mean, again, the DPW, you know, I'm thinking in terms of project management, may have some role here, but they're pretty overtaxed right now. Marlo's not here to defend himself either, in fairness, but maybe, maybe we need to have some further conversation. And this, this in part goes to the going forward, the whole structure of Park and Rec. You know, what's the role of the Park and Rec Director, the Commissioners? This is going to be the only park we have in town going forward, so. Any thoughts?
The bids are due on June 7th. Now, I've gotten some revised specifications, so I'll take a look at those tomorrow morning and get those out to the prospective vendors. If the specification revisions are extensive, then I'll probably push that due date out a little bit, just to give everybody a fair crack at it. But there will be a time when the bid will have to be awarded, and the Park and Rec Commissioners have broad authority over parks, and there may be, I can foresee some sort of agreement between the Park Commission and the Select Board to make sure that we have solid management on this and future projects moving forward, so that there's clear lines of command and control. We've run into difficulties with projects where there are too many people, sort of not really in charge, but interested and so forth, and that's gotten us into some troubles in the past, so we don't want to replicate that experience. And I'm sure everybody will agree with the fact that we want to have something, at the end of the day, that everybody can feel good about and proud about, and that the community will value.
In the past, Ms. Zaturka was attending your Friends meetings?
Yeah.
And she was the liaison to the Commissioners?
Right.
So now, probably, maybe a Commissioner could be appointed to do that in the interim and bring it back to the full Commission, and I think it'll pick up where it left off, basically, seems.
Unless maybe Ms. Zaturka would like to stay involved in the park?
I'm definitely going to continue to be a core member of the Friends group. I just don't have the, I won't, as of now, have the town tie, and I've been taking care of all of the work, getting the bills to the Commission, and then the CPA and all of that for approval.
What I'm saying is, can you still have the contact with the Commission if you're going to be involved with the Friends on a temporary basis here to keep it moving?
Sure, it would be nice to have more than support, but more authoritative figure from the Commission and/or Select Board, which you guys sort of have been doing. As, I mean, support is one thing, but it's really the authority that is what we're talking about, and I think I've sort of played that role. And so, sure, I'm willing to help out in any way I can.
All right, well, maybe, David, we could have some conversation with the Park and Rec Commissioners too, and just put our heads together and figure out what we might be able to work out. Okay? Okay, but thank you for bringing, that's a very valid point. Again, we don't want taxpayer dollars to languish, you know, and go.
So maybe when Andy gets back, we could have a full board discussion.
Absolutely.
I don't feel like we should be telling the Park and Rec Commissioners, they're the elected officials, and I certainly think that they bring, you know, things to the table that I'm sure will benefit everyone.
Yep, I just want to make sure that.
Right.
Yeah, we have to have that point of contact.
Right, but we, I don't think that we are involved with, David is a procurement officer.
Right.
So that's his niche, and what he has to do to help process the bids and that sort of thing for everybody. But as a Select Board member, I don't feel like I need to oversee that either.
No, I don't think we, yeah, but we need to make sure there's a structure in place.
I think we have enough on our plates, too, so.
Exactly, but since Kathy's been doing all the work right along from day one here, I mean, it would just be nice for the community if she stayed involved with the Park and Rec, you know? She's done such a great job throughout this whole process so far, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so that's the plan?
That's the plan.
So you guys will meet and discuss and talk about how to bridge that?
Absolutely. I mean, I feel the way it's been going along has been the way that the Commissioners have planned for it to go along, although it may be interpreted differently. So having Kathy's role, you know, being that, however we deem it at the end, but still, I mean, obviously, being our only park, we are fully invested in that, so.
Okay, well, we'll see, we'll see how it goes, and, yeah.
And we'll talk afterwards about how we can communicate better.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Senior Center and Fire Substation Building Committee update.
Big day with the Senior Center tomorrow, 3:00 and 6:00. There's going to be design meetings at the Hopkins Academy gym?
Hopkins Academy.
Cafeteria, or the gym?
Actually, I don't know.
Okay. Well, all the plans are going to be over at the Hopkins Academy tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon, 3:00, tomorrow night, 6:00. Come see the design for the Senior Center, and just a reminder of the Chicken and Go on June 11th. I want to make sure we drop that in there again. And the tickets will be available tomorrow evening. They'll be there, so.
So with the fire substation, okay, so the fire substation is still in design phase? There was a meeting yesterday with the cost estimators, and early estimations of the construction costs received from the cost estimate firms reveal a shortfall in the project budget. So there was a meeting yesterday, the scope of work was reviewed, the numbers were reviewed. The shortfall, potential shortfall, is between $600,000 and $715,000 based upon final scope of work. Mr. Mitchkowski came to see me, Chief Spanknebel came to see me, and together we agreed that we should put this project on hold administratively until a viable plan to move forward can be developed. Building Committee is meeting on June 1st, and they plan to meet with the Select Board on June 7th. We discussed possible options for raising the additional money. Obviously, we would need a town meeting vote, probably followed by a town meeting ballot question, and I've given in my weekly reports some of the time schedules for getting that done. Fast-tracking this project is obviously in their interests, but I think at a minimum we should have a meeting to talk about the project and how to move it forward.
Comments?
Meeting tomorrow with the OPM.
When we met with the OPM outside estimator, their estimator and architect. The project there, when they did the borings.
Yep.
The fill in there is not the right fill, so they gotta excavate that out, bring 12 feet down, bring some fill to fill that, then they gotta preload that and it's gonna set either three to six months. So that building won't settle.
So, but your, your design is not, it hasn't changed, there hasn't been any additions, there's been no change to it. Our problem now seems to be that the site needs adjustments and more mitigation than was originally planned.
Well, it's just totally unforeseen who can see.
Exactly.
That could happen onto this site until you do the bore sighting and everything. And what we ask for is say, if the board will agree to have a special town meeting, to go to town meeting to ask for additional funds for this, to complete this project, or we do some drastic cuts in it and don't blame us for having what they did on this safety complex because this is no Taj Mahal, it's everything that's needed in a, in the fire substation and there's no throws or throws in this project. But is the board even interested in allowing this to go to a special meeting? Because why I say a special meeting, to bring this out to the fall, we'd have to tack on another $100,000 on this bill.
Why is that?
For escalation, for delays. Just by these delays, it's another $50,000.
On top of the 600 or 700,000?
No, that's included in the 700 to 50,000.
How much have we spent on this project so far?
How much have we spent on the project so far? We've spent approximately $3,000 per month for the OPM services and I paid a $28,000 bill for the, for the architect. I know that there's some outstanding bills associated with the geotech site survey and the soil evaluation. So those amount probably to $10,000 at this point.
You're probably looking after all your bills probably close to 100 grand right now with all the architect's work and everything.
Is there any opportunity to look at other sites?
And what if you hit the same thing with that?
I'm just asking.
You know, you're not paying nothing for the land, that's the key thing.
Well, we're, we're paying whatever this overrun is for the land, I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
That's still cheaper than buying a piece of land.
Are we paying 700, up to $700,000?
There's 400,000.
No, no.
A piece of property that we were looking at up for sale right now in chapter 61 that just came up at the beginning of the meeting.
Is, what they went through, when, when they go through this with the estimator, it's every nut and bolt in the building. We don't do that as a committee to start.
Oh, no, I get that, I get that.
So when they reconcile, they go back with the architect's estimators there, the architect and this outside estimator. They go over everything, all electric, sewer, the water, the siding, the roof, the coop.
John, what, what John just said to you though is that we just talked about a piece of property, the Heineken piece of property. It's now down to 400,000, we have a right of first refusal on that property. If we were to purchase that property for $400,000 and not incur the extra expense that you're speaking of, no.
You don't know that.
I know we don't, but, but one of the options is, you think we should bore up there before we, we.
Then you don't have to cut the building, John, you're not cutting anything else.
We can't expand it because we don't have the money to expand it, we're stuck the way what we are now.
Because of the lot.
Because of the lot.
You didn't, no, you didn't want a big building, you wanted to cut that.
I'm not saying make it bigger, I'm saying.
Donald wanted to come under $3 million under the project.
I'm saying if we're going to spend the extra 700,000 now and we can buy a piece of property up the road, that it puts the exact same plot that you're talking about putting and there's an extra six acres for the town of Hadley and we save $300,000 because we're not paying 700,000, we're only paying 400,000 for the lot.
What if we don't get that vote?
That's.
Well, what if we don't get the expansion vote?
It's sort of a misunderstanding here, the land to correct it is about 200K. 500K is additional expenses in the building. It's not 700,000 just for the land.
Right, but even so, I think what, again.
I'm sorry, I assumed that the 700,000 was to mitigate it and that's why I asked earlier. It's not 700,000 to mitigate, it's 200,000 to mitigate.
That's what they're estimating, but the, the fill that will be used to compact it, it will also be the fill that you, to fill the area, so.
But the building's 500,000 more than you estimated to begin with.
Right.
Because the nuts and bolts have now been counted.
Right, and the chief would insist on a sprinkle system in it because just, you're not going to put that in there and not protect it. So in essence, what you said, if you had to bring in fill anyways, you got about 100K there and it's 200 to mitigate the situation, so in actuality, it's only 100,000 more. No, it's, they said it's going to be the extra expenses, 200,000 dollars in the whole thing because.
Yeah, but we had 100,000 in it to fill the land.
The survey, the whole thing they do with monitoring the whole thing is, is the extra expense. It's not just through the plan, it has to be monitored, the whole bit. So there's another whole expense there.
I just think before we go and authorize a special town meeting, it seems like for just a little bit more effort, we should, to John's point, if we now know that we could purchase nine acres for 400,000.
It'd be a great investment for the town of Hadley over the next 100 years. And none of us are going to be here to see it, but.
Well, don't forget, you're going to do that, you're going to tack on probably another half a million dollars on this bill.
Why is that?
By delaying till everything's all done and said. This won't be done till spring and.
But a lot of the work that's been done is the building design itself and it doesn't seem that it's going to change.
It's all stuff we're going to use, exactly.
Yeah.
What we told your architect yesterday is to hold till June 1st when he comes to our meeting. Because he's not going to design a, he can't design a building without the funds to build it. So he'll design the building with the funds that everybody agreed with.
Yeah.
But is that the building we want? No. But there's no other choice, it's either that or nothing.
Or we, or we.
There is another choice right now.
I'm just telling you, no. If you take this and intend to move the project there, you're not going to get done till your town meeting will not be in the fall, it'll be by next spring, then, then the election behind it and then add on another probably half a million dollars in this.
But I think.
At least that.
We, we don't know that, I mean, I think we're speculating and I think that, I mean, I get really uncomfortable when I hear somebody on the, the building subcommittee say, we're not even getting the building we want. I mean, I, this is a lot of money.
We would have got the building we want if you guys listened to what we had, the original price was 3.6 million. But they were screaming on cutting it down, screaming on coming under, under $3 million. So what are you going to do?
I would like to see what, because the rest of the committee, only John and, and the chief have seen and heard what the OPM has said. I, I personally would like to hear their report next week and bring that back to you on the 7th and make a determination then if we feel as if we need to continue with this project where it is and go for, you know, a special town meeting of, of that nature just to see if the townspeople would allocate more money for this project where it is.
Okay, so wait until the full committee's met then?
I'd agree with that. The only other question I would have on this, and maybe David could help, but what would our obligations be to the OPM and architect with our signed contracts already?
Yeah, so I haven't had a chance to go back into the contracts and look at the, either of them. My sense is that we would certainly owe the, the architect for the work done up to this time and now, now this project's on hold, so there shouldn't be additional charges after today. The OPM is still going to have to be with this project because it's going to still exceed 100, 1.5 million dollars. So those cost obligations are going to come to us anyways if we, unless we would cancel the project.
If we went to a different site, you're saying?
No, I'm saying if you cancel it altogether.
If we move it to a different site, it's just a change of scope.
How can you cancel the town meeting, vote is the building?
I'm just, I'm just answering the question.
What?
Just answering the question that was asked.
Okay, so then I think the suggestion is, and I thank you for reminding me that, I forgot that the whole subcommittee hadn't even heard all of this yet. So let the subcommittee, the full subcommittee do their work and then come back to us on June 7th?
With that being said, does at least the majority of this board would agree if it's a favorable vote of the subcommittee agree to have a special town meeting to seek extra funding?
I'm not going to pin myself down when I haven't even heard what the subcommittee has to say.
I'm not saying no, though, I'm not saying no, I'm not saying no.
Yeah, just wait, wait and know.
What about you?
I'm sorry, John, you really, there's really no reason to respond to this.
I have no problem with it, I, I, I just, we've downsized the building, now we've got options and troubles with the lots. We've got another proposal in front of us that was a site that we were looking at for a couple of years now that we took into consideration and we never brought it in front of the people. So if we're going to open up the town.
It was brought in front of the people and failed.
Because it didn't have a building on it, it was just a lot.
Right.
And that's why most of the people didn't vote for it.
Okay, so let's, let's let the subcommittee, right?
Yeah.
And then you know that we're interested in having you discuss that.
It's no secret and I think right now, for an investment for the town, that this, this piece of property that's in front of us is a very good investment for us. There's no more land here, everybody already knows that.
But you're going to go back, you're going to ask the people to pay for another 400,000 dollars for this piece of property on top of all the other things that have passed right now in town.
I know, I understand that.
And there are other things on the agenda coming up that are going to be hitting people's pocketbooks at the same time, so.
Yeah.
And the 700,000 shortfall.
That's right, so let's, let's see what, what we can bring back the next meeting.
Okay, all right, so we'll, David, we'll make sure that's on the agenda for the 7th?
It's on the agenda for the 7th, we're just, just to state the obvious, we're going to have to do a lot of financial planning in order to move this project forward.
Yep, okay. Excellent.
You know, we get the library coming down the road around the corner, one way or another too.
Yeah, we'll find out in July about that grant.
That's what I said, we have projects with money.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so select board priorities. So last meeting, we talked about working with the finance committee to come up with kind of a plan of attack of where we should spend our time and in what order. So thank you to everybody that provided feedback in that regard. And I think, I didn't have everything in advance of the meeting, I just received some of it today, so I didn't have a chance to do any sort of formal scoring. But it looks like generally speaking, the two primary areas that people are interested in talking, talking about sooner rather than later is to get more information from the Department of Revenue and, and bring people in to talk about financing options, overrides. And again, this is not, this is not a recommendation, it's just information gathering so that we're smarter about how all of this stuff works. And public safety issues seem to be the two that came out on top. Does that make sense to everybody who?
You know, there was, there's a lot of other ideas here. I had written one with the wage study, which we're working with UMass with anyway. That should be just an ongoing thing every year or two as I wrote down. The same thing with the IT, you know, what we had spoken about getting things together with the school. Maybe we could do something on a county level or something along with the lines of UMass.
Yeah.
You know, these are all options on each one of your points, but they all need to be discussed again, you know?
Right, yep, I completely agree. And I think the idea would be to, to bring some of these issues up and we have a meeting focused on these things.
Yeah.
So right now, we have meeting June 7th and June 21st, is that right?
7th sounds pretty busy tonight.
7th already sounds pretty busy. So I'm wondering if maybe if we're going to be, bring in invited guests, that the 21st would be a date that we would try to do that?
Okay.
Can we have a, can, if we can talk next meeting and get everybody's feedback on where they are so that we as a group feel confident in the ways we're going in this direction? I mean, if everybody's got a five on something, let's go do something else, let's get that right off our list.
Yeah.
And let's get our priorities on there and then let's, let's be able to discuss the priorities so that everybody's on the same page with them.
If everybody's on a one, two or three, let's concentrate on a one, two or three, yeah.
I mean, I don't need to, I personally don't think the charter is worth talking about, the board stipends are worth talking about. I've got some fives on here and if people feel differently, then let's, let's hash it out before we bring anybody in to talk about anything.
I would like another day to renumber my categories.
Okay, all right, that's fair enough.
I'll get it too.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there an auditor coming in to explain the audit to us?
Yeah, would that be, do you have a date scheduled with Tom yet?
Because Linda said something before she went home, she walked in here and she said David Eisenhower, Eisenhower was planning on coming on the 7th.
Do we have him scheduled on the 7th date?
Yes, me too.
So maybe we should change that to the 21st?
That's, because we had talked about maybe having all of the financial folks here together at one meeting.
At the same time.
Let me, let me give you a preview of what's coming up on the 21st.
21st or 7th?
7th.
And she also said he would like to be here to hear the auditor.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea.
So it makes a lot of sense.
All right, so we have tentatively the audit presentation for 2016 now. We have not received the draft audit yet, so that's supposed to happen this Friday. So if, if there's, if that doesn't come in, I'll certainly let you, let you know. The treasurer is going to meet with you right after that to talk about the borrowing and have you authorize the borrowing for the capital projects that are coming up, for which we'll need money. Municipal building committee has been invited to talk to you. We have a meeting with the fires, substation building committee. We have a big issue having to do with the health insurance trust. Jerry, you wanted to talk about the sewer impact fees. We have an APR for Lawrence Plain Road, got the old Hadley flea market issue and a couple of other matters.
Which date is this?
That's June 7th, so that's a big agenda right now.
Okay, well, and if we're going to talk about the Hampshire Trust, shouldn't Joe Shea be here?
Yes, I've reached out to him, he's, yeah, so I've reached out to him.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
So he might be the 21st too then?
No, it sounds like he's already on the 7th.
He's on the 7th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just because you reached out, I didn't get the feeling he reached back.
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't have him confirmed?
We don't have him confirmed that there is a vote that needs to be, that needs to happen in June. So you have two bites at the apple, I just put it on the 7th.
I mean, I'd prefer to have him here.
Would it be too many people to consider Terry Williams on the 21st?
Well, yeah, that's what I, that's where we were starting this conversation.
Yeah, initially, that's what you suggested.
Right.
But, you know, I suppose he could fit in the picture on the 21st too.
And they're going to be here, Tri-Board's going to be here too at that time.
Okay, what's everybody doing on the 14th or the 28th?
28th is going into the holiday.
Going into? When you start 4th of July and like June 6th or something?
Get the cap slightly early.
I start.
Camper's already in New Hampshire, huh? No wifi?
Yeah.
Guessing 14th is a better option.
I think so, I think we've been told.
Wednesday fireworks on the MDM Beach?
Is everybody available on the 14th if we add a meeting? You are, okay, okay. John, you available on the 14th?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll be back.
Okay, so can we add a meeting on the 14th, David?
Done.
Done, okay.
Oh, yay.
All right, and then so we'll try to line up.
The municipal buildings committee is waiting for direction from the select board. I'd still like that to be on the 7th.
Right.
So it's been longstanding and they've, they've kind of postponed and, and backed off and, and we have new issues, you know, that we're certainly speaking of this evening. So I'd like to advocate for leaving them on the 7th if we could please.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, so again, I did, we've got these, I mean, and actually, some of the ones that were ranked like that, Hampshire Trust having Joe Shea, even though it was under the people related, where there's an imminent reason to push forward with that anyway. But we'll focus on, and then in terms of public safety, maybe we can try to focus in on the 21st then if we're going to add the 14th. And hone in on some of those issues and talk to the chiefs about the, one of the things I had just, one on one with Mike Spanknebel mentioned is that if, in fact, he's looking for. Spank Nabel mentioned is that if, in fact, he's looking for, to move forward with that staffing plan that he presented that we weren't able to fund fully, that it would be a good idea to have some sort of an actual sense of an implementation plan from him, like from a management standpoint, if you're gonna bring these people on, what are they gonna be doing? How are they gonna get trained? Who's doing the training? All of that kind of stuff. Nothing, you know, nothing big fancy PowerPoint, but just try to understand.
Has the regionalization come back up again with dispatch?
Yes. Well, it's come up in conversation, but I think we, I'd like to talk about it again.
Yeah.
We've brought it up at the ambulance committee.
Came up in the ambulance committee for sure.
I think a lot of these other issues on here could be touched on in the Tri-Board meeting, like human resources, you know, what is the school presently doing to handle it? And could we make it work better, joining forces or something, you know, and things like that?
And I think the IT, we talked about some sort of group effort too. So might be, yeah, like you're saying, in the Tri-Board, if we have somebody from the schools here, Danny, or somebody from the-
Has the Tri-Board anything on the calendar?
Not yet. No. Right.
I think we're waiting for the school committee.
Looks like it's gonna be June 21.
Okay. Put the Tri-Board for the 21st?
Donald just suggested that. We, we hadn't scheduled one yet.
No, but I thought that was, our discussion was going that way, wasn't it?
You had talked about it. I didn't get a clear source of-
Because we're gonna have Terry Williams come in and everybody else, and they should be part of this conversation, listen to the people that are coming in, I think.
Do you wanna see if you can confirm Terry for that date, David? And then that would then, and then we could invite the school committee?
Yep.
And finance committee, of course. Okay.
I would think that would be the first meeting we're gonna really dive into what 219 is gonna look at, look like, you know? And the school committee should be here and the finance committee, definitely, you know?
Okay. Is everybody good with that schedule for now? Just bite it off in chunks?
Sure, we'll be here.
We're gonna get a copy of everybody's information regarding this?
Yeah, I can, I can scan these and send them along.
The planning board, I had on here that they were looking for their scanner. Did we move that along so that that is in the process of a purchase, or at least everybody's on the same page with the purchasing of the piece of equipment that will benefit both the planning board and the building inspector?
Yeah. So the, the, the planning board has a request for transfer from the reserve fund for $12,000. I don't know that they've acted upon it. I don't think they-
Wasn't there discussion on them possibly trying to find a less expensive scanner? Probably had that, that discussion, that, that seemed like enormous amount of money to find.
Yeah, so, I mean, one of the things that we did do is we met privately with one of the planning board members to talk about what would be a suitable scanner for, for plans. And, you know, ultimately, we decided you get what you pay for. If you, if you wanna get the right kind of scanner, particularly if you're doing reductions and you don't want distortions.
But the problem is the size, the size of the actual plans, like from the engineering firms, I don't, I don't think we have a scanner here. I, I know-
We don't.
Yeah, we don't. That's why they wanted to-
That's, yeah. Cause I mean, we still go either to copy, I think Staples got a big one now too. But we either go to Copycat and Amherst or Staples, and we're, we're spending a lot of money, the rest of the departments, on copies of plans, you know?
We also have a fire chief that doesn't have a fire.
Yeah, but it's, this is a one-off investment that, we gotta, we gotta feed, you can't, you can't just take it and all go and one.
Can't this come from capital?
It is a capital, yeah.
It is a capital, right, from scanning, for scanning.
Right, but they've fallen woefully behind.
Let me check, let me check in with the planning board, find out where they are with that, that paperwork, cause that request really needs to come to you from them.
Yeah, that's the process, cause you guys have to approve the funds, not us. Okay.
Maybe you could take a little bit out of each department to fund it. Water, sewer, you know, DPW, priorities, planning board, select board.
They've already authorized the money, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, and again, if you remember the conversation, this is, we've got pieces of paper-
We can't take something from somebody you've already given them. No.
And it's a one-time expense, that it's an investment. And the other idea was that we might then be able, to your point, go back to the university and maybe get some interns and folks who could actually get the work done, but they can't do it if we don't have the equipment for them to do it with.
We could do a GoFund on Facebook.
Which follows into the next thought regarding identifying senior needs.
Okay, you said it.
Tax work offs.
You said at UMass, maybe they got something used that we can use.
Or buy from them.
Or buy from them.
Let's get the process going, I guess. Let's find out what we need and then we can go from there.
Well, we have nothing now, so anything's better than nothing at this point. But let's spend the money wisely.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, onto the next?
Yep.
Okay. So special town meeting, fall town meeting countdown.
Dan had a question.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
Just have a quick question on this topic. I noticed on the sheet that the assessors were listed.
The assessors are listed on-
On the, uh, area of focus, yeah.
Yeah. So under other, we have opportunities for consolidation, outsourcing, removal of operational log jams, inspections, and assessor. So the reason, the reason I put that down there was when I was thinking about opportunities for consolidation and outsourcing, one of the things we had talked about was looking to see if there was, if, if we have the capacity, there's certain functions that we could theoretically outsource or regionalize so that Hadley doesn't own them anymore, but we're, you know, like we do with Northampton with the veterans, right? But then there may be opportunity for us to have some capacity to actually bring on additional work as well. So if we have any areas where we could do that, we should look at it. So again, it's a discussion point. It's not a recommendation of any kind. It's just something to talk about.
We need some measures known and things like that.
Yep. Yeah, so that's why, thought was to have some conversation about that.
Your thoughts? Your thinking?
I know we had, had that discussion before, a few years ago about outsourcing and bringing in other towns' work.
In sourcing too.
Or in-sourcing, rather.
Correct.
Yeah. The problem with that is, I know we had discussed it with, or not discussed it, but discussed Amherst. Amherst also has a larger staff. They have three full-time people.
I wouldn't think about Amherst if I was gonna in-source.
Uh, no, Amherst in-sources other communities, yeah. But they have a, a second person there that makes a substantial amount of money that works in the other towns.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, it's something we should, you know, I, I think we should at least look at it, you know?
All the properties right now and the assessors is on my, on, on-
DUC, I guess, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, we're, we're ahead of the game a little bit, might say, anyway.
That's more requirement now, not a solid requirement, but something that the state is looking for, that they want napping and property records online.
Okay, so special town meeting fall countdown. David, you've got a memo here outlining that?
Right, so it's no rest for the wicked. We, we're already preparing for the fall town meeting. I've put together a provisional countdown calendar for that, and I think it's perhaps most useful to read it backwards from December 4th, when the tax rate is due to be set by the assessors in the Department of Revenue in order to provide for the collector's office to, to publish the tax bills and send them out by December 31st. That's a critical deadline. So going backwards from there, if we're talking about an override, and I know that that's a small word, but with a big meaning, if we're talking about an override, then just sort of backing out what the steps, what steps we'd have to follow in order to make that happen, in order for the tax rate to be set on time. We're talking about a special town meeting that would occur on October 5th, which is about three weeks earlier than we normally have it. We usually have it at the last Thursday of October or the first Thursday of November. So this would be the first Thursday in October. We talked about having a special town meeting, warum, forum rather, sorry. We talked about getting public input into the FY19 budget process.
Excuse me for interrupting, but in order for us to get the tax rate set on time, you're advocating for having the, the special town meeting two and a half weeks early? That's, that's why the dates have changed?
If you're doing an override. If you're not doing an override, then you can have the special town meeting at the regular time.
Otherwise, we're not able to get in on the tax rate assessment.
Right, right. And then that has financial consequences for the town that we do not want to get into.
Okay.
I'm sorry for interrupting.
So there's plenty, there's plenty of room in this for adjustment. Starting on May 12th, we have the capital up, plan upgrades have been sent out to the departments with a due date of June 30th. Tonight's meeting, I'm asking that you set a fall special town meeting date of October 5th. This is flexible. You don't have to make that decision tonight. Open the warrant on June 7th, close it on August 2nd. And then the finance committee, CPA, capital planning, planning board, et cetera, do all the recommendations, and we send it out for town council review by September 13th. Feels like there's a lot of time in here, but there's really not. Then we have to post the, two weeks before the town meeting, September 21st. And then we have our public forum and then the special town meeting.
Okay. All right, so again, this is, you know, take it under advisement. There's no decision made yet, but just so everybody knows, I guess, what we're, would be entailed, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions for David?
Is this gonna be posted on the, is this gonna be posted in your, on the website?
Yeah.
If it is, is that just like an explanation there as to why the town meeting would be early, so that people understand it?
Yeah, I think, I think communicating early enough is definitely going to be the order of the day for anything like this. This is, this is something that's new and different, and we obviously want to have a lot of opportunity for people to have their questions answered.
They may not even realize that it's early because we've always just had it in October, so.
The wonks will.
The who?
Wonks, the people who follow us that watch and expect every, every year for the third week.
Gonna watch when you call people there, Jerry.
It's a common term.
It's those 120 people we can name, yeah. Okay. So we do have an executive session scheduled tonight. Are we okay to go into announcements? And actually, Donald, I'm sorry, I don't wanna, I was gonna ask you, because you seem to be the most, I think you have knowledge of, I received a couple of questions today about some equipment trailer that was over at the public safety complex. And I think you've-
I spoke to the chief about it.
Right. Can you just explain what that is? Because-
It's a truck that was given to the town at no cost, according to the chief. And they're looking into using it as a disaster communication truck for all of the 20 communities in Hampshire County. With, this is being addressed by the fire chiefs associations.
Okay. So there's no, for, this isn't necessarily a piece of equipment that's coming into the town of Hadley, cause I know people are-
Is it through tri-state or is it through state?
I'm not sure. FEMA came in. FEMA, so.
Right. Okay. But, but so that's really more of a regional issue, and it sounds like Mike's gonna be dealing with his regional contacts about dealing with this.
There's no cost to the town presently at all.
Right.
Just that the truck is-
Well, that, that, then that would be a cost, so, yeah. And I, that's why the calls came in. People were wondering, cause they know this whole issue with the substation and everything, if we're saying that we didn't have room and all of a sudden another piece of equipment showed up. So we should probably, you know, get an update from the chief when we talk about, about that. Okay, announcements?
I'd just like to talk a little bit about our little traffic tie-up that we had over on Hockingham Road on last Sunday. And I know that's a hot point for a lot of people.
Little things for everybody to understand. First and foremost, it wasn't just the flea market that was happening last week. There was graduations at Hampshire College and at Mount Holyoke. So we're not anticipating the same problem to be this weekend that we had last weekend. However, we certainly understand that the flea market is a very popular place to be on Memorial Day weekend, and we anticipate there will be a lot of traffic down there unless there's a snow, a rainstorm. So, you know, people understand you have to change your, your habits that are there. Mr. Shala did have the police officers were there. The extra traffic that we feel occurred down there had a lot more to do with the graduations than it had to do with the flea markets. So I got the phone calls. I understand the concerns of the people. I understand that the bridge is getting fixed. Hopefully, it'll be done in the 14 weeks that they told us, so that won't be a tie-up anymore. We know this weekend is gonna be a big weekend for the flea market, and the graduations are not gonna occur, and the police officers will be there on this Sunday as well. So hopefully, there'll be a little less of a tie-up and an inconvenience on Lawrence Plain Road on Sunday.
And we'll know when we're going through on the bus. To the cemetery, so we'll see what type of situation it is as we drive by.
Was it similar to opening day at the beginning of the year?
It was similar to opening day at Wrigley.
No, the first, the first flea market was excessive also.
The first flea market was a little tamped down because of the weather. It wasn't exactly warm for those first couple. They were busy, but by no standards, this past weekend was busier than the first flea market last year. Flea market last year, the first flea market of last year was the busiest, was on the busiest day that I've seen. And this past Sunday was by far the busiest I've ever seen.
Does the bottleneck occur once the lot becomes filled and people are trying to get in and there's no way to let them in? And you can't continue the traffic moving along?
Yes, that's part, that's part of the issue, yes.
Yeah.
And there's no turnarounds anywhere. They just have to keep going.
No, and as you flush, they turn around and just triple the problem.
Correct. And we've been trying to avoid shutting the entry gate off of the flea market, because that doesn't stop people from still coming to the area. All it does is it just postpones the traffic from getting in. So it's a latter resort, and we, this past weekend was very challenging.
Is one direction more problematic than the other? Going southerly versus going northerly?
I think the, it, it can depend, but I think that southerly can be a little bit busier, just because the, you have the opportunity for more traffic to come from the highway. So.
Yeah, and the prob, the compounding the problem is the bridge also, because the first one this year was, they were parked on the bridge and no one could go either way. Cause I drove through it. I happened to hear what was going on, and I drove through it to see how bad the first one was, and it was real bad. And the same thing happened Sunday again, so.
Correct. The bridge does, people are coming through the traffic lane, not expecting the light to turn, and they're stuck, which backs up the way and the only one can move.
There's no courtesy out there whatsoever.
Well, it's, it's kind of unknown when you're sitting at the light around that corner and the cars are stopped right at Bay Road. That's it.
But they don't let them through.
You got room for two cars and 10, 10 or 15 cars could go through.
Oh, no, you're not gonna get in before me, so they go like this, and then you can't come across the bridge and take a turn. I've been there myself.
When we get to that point, we're essentially tying up our patrols that are on duty to stop and, and to keep traffic off of the bridge.
Okay, any other announcements?
Just remember, this Sunday is the Memorial Day Parade. We usually start around 10:30, quarter of 11, going to the cemeteries. There will be a parade in the center of North Hadley as usual, and then again at the Holy Rosary Cemetery. And we do make it to all the other cemeteries also, but the band doesn't join us until the Holy Rosary. And then, at that point, the parade begins at 2 o'clock on Russell Street and goes to West Street Common, where it will have its last ceremony and disperse. And everybody usually is invited back to the Legion for refreshments offered by the Legion. And so come- offered by the Legion, and so, come out and have a good time and march with us, and love to see everybody there.
Or take pictures.
Take pictures. You can march this year, year of finance.
They said he couldn't take pictures if he marched.
Have you taken the same picture, the same back of the head, if I was marching? Please, they'll go by me.
We thought the pavers were coming tomorrow, but they patched and paved everything today, they swept the whole lot yesterday.
How's it look?
Patched.
Better.
Yeah, but the, you know, the upper part, they put a lot of blacktop in there, you know, and all the Legion, everywhere where there were bigger holes are patched, so, 24 tons of blacktop can only go so far, you know?
It's a lot of blacktop.
Sounds like a lot, too.
Well, it's a 10, 10-wheeler truckload, that's all.
Okay, anything else before executive session?
No, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session, not to reconvene an open session, and as per provision of ML, MGL, chapter 30A, section 21A, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or position of the public body in the chair, so declares, this is in concern with the Police Department.
As chair, I declare that holding a discussion regarding this item in open session could have a detrimental impact on the town.
We'll call both, Skavits?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Teigen?
Yes.
Yes.
And Jensen.
Dave, thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night.